Good evening. I'd like to call a special meeting of the Sebastian City Council to order. Would you first please rise for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you. (inaudible)
Okay, now for, let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monti.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm now going to recess the special meeting of the Sebastian City Council and we're going to reconvene in the second floor conference room in an executive session that's going to last approximately two hours. So, we anticipate reconvening back here at 7:00 AM for a...
PM.
PM. Did I say AM?
Yes, you did.
I'm not going to be here all night, no, thank you. At 7:00 PM, at which time the city attorney is going to spend some time giving us an extremely good lesson on all the things that we need to know about the rules and the sunshine law and all that kind of stuff, so...
Actually, if we could just put some things on the record for the public session, which is required, if I could just make a quick statement?
I'm sorry.
Okay, the executive session has been, was requested at a regular city council meeting on November 20th and approved by council pursuant to 286.0118 on two different matters. The first matter is Pelican Island Audubon Society, Graham Cox and Donna Halloran versus City of Sebastian. It's case number 2001-2019. It's going to be a long night. AP 000142. And that, the persons attending that will be Mayor Ed Dodd, Vice Mayor Charles Monti, Councilmember Damian Gilliams, Councilmember Jim Hill, Councilmember Pamela Paris, City Attorney James Stokes, Special Counsel Daniel Abbott, City Manager Paul Carlisle, and a certified court reporter. The second matter is City of Sebastian versus Sembler and Sembler, Inc., which is case The persons attending that will be Mayor Ed Dodd, Vice Mayor Charles Monti, Councilmember Damian Gilliams, Councilmember Jim Hill, Councilmember Pamela Paris, City Attorney James Stokes, City Manager Paul Carlisle, and the certified court reporter. We're not exactly sure on the time, so I'm not sure we'll be back here at 7:00. It may be shorter than that, but just whenever we're done there, we'll reconvene down here to close it out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, I recessed the regular council meeting at this time.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the, um, find my number here, November sixteenth, uh, November twenty-sixth meeting of the special meeting of the city council. And as soon as the city attorney gets back, I'll turn the meeting over to him. He's back there in the back. We're gonna now hear a presentation by the city attorney on all of the things we need to know about the sunshine law and all of those other types of stuff.
Testing? Yeah, I'll just move it up a little bit for me. Um, and thank you for your time for the executive session and just for the public record that 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 is, uh, is closed now. And just a reminder that under Florida statute, what was discussed is all confidential until the litigations come to conclusion. The other items though that, uh, that we wanted to talk to you about and kind of in a, in a workshop setting, um, just to give you some food for thought. And we're definitely not going to be able to go in the type of depth that I would want to, uh, but I will encourage you. And I was just speaking with, uh, Councilwoman Paris about this on the way downstairs is that, uh, uh, there are a lot of good opportunities like through the Florida League of Cities and stuff. They have their little university classes where they go into a lot of things. So especially for the new council members. If you want to know more or more in depth about some of the duties and obligations of, uh, of being an elected official. You know, the clerk will send those things out and it's definitely something worth looking at. Most of them are over in Orlando, but those, uh, those classes are, are really usually very informative. What specifically I wanted to talk to you about was, and I wanted to start before we get into sunshine and public records. I wanted to talk about some of the legal requirements, uh, of being an elected official and some of the, the, uh, just to help you understand some of the things you do. The attachments, um, the first thing I gave you was in, uh, chapter one sixty-six, um, and it was the ordinance and resolutions. Cause there's a lot of confusion with that. And just so, so that, uh, especially those of you that are new know it's the definition of what is an ordinance? And what is a resolution comes right out of Florida statute. Uh, procedurally, an ordinance is, uh, requires two readings. You have a first reading, you have a second reading. Um, most of the time the second reading, uh, comes along with a public hearing. So the public does have a right to, to chime in on it. And it is, as stated here, it's an official legislative action. You're, you know, the same way we have up in Tallahassee, you have the state legislature passing laws because we have home rule power. You have lawmaking ability. So you can pass laws that impact the city of Sebastian. But you have to do that through an ordinance. And there's a requirement that that get published in the newspaper. And that, uh, you know, it's on an agenda, there, the action items there, it's got, the ordinance caption is required to be read. Actually, the statute says it's either the ordinance needs to be read in full or just a caption. Surprisingly, every place I've ever worked always opts for just a caption. And that's a good thing because otherwise we'd be doing a lot of reading. But there are some exceptions, uh, and some nuances for a few things, but we'll hit those as, as time comes along. There's some things like if it's a, if it's an ordinance impacting, uh, uh, certain land uses, it can't just be a regular ad in the paper. It has to be a box ad in the paper, things like that. Uh, budget, uh, we have to have our budget hearings at very specific time. And those are required by law, at least one of them to take place after five P M. Now, in our case, doesn't impact us too much. Cause all of our meetings are required to be after five P M. But those places that have afternoon or morning meetings have to make sure they do one in the, in the evening for, for the budget hearings. So there's some of those little nuances that come along. But, but like I said, well, you know, you'll experience those as, as the year progresses. Resolutions are, are a lesser form of, of your governmental action. Um, kind of the, the good way of looking at it. You have three roles, by the way. You have a legislative role or a quasi legislative role. You know, like I said, you're acting like a legislature, the same way they do up in Tallahassee or they do in Congress. Um, so you have that legislative role. And you have an administrative role because you're also the, the policy, you know, you set policy for how the city runs. And so a lot of the things that you do in that, uh, administrative role come through resolutions. Resolutions are only read once and they are on a variety of issues, but they're either temporary in nature or they are dealing with administrative stuff. Then your last role is a judicial role. You, the quasi judicial actions we have, if you're granting variances or conditional uses, rezoning, certain things that'll come along. And, and we let you know when those are coming up. And those have a very specific set of rules as well for quasi judicial. You know, the, the evidence that's introduced is introduced in a very special way. It's more like a judicial proceeding, more like a court proceeding. So you, you know, you thought you just ran to be a city council member. You didn't know you were running for three different jobs. You're a legislature, an administrator and a judge. So, uh, so you got a little bit of everything going on there. So there is a whole lot of other stuff in Florida statutes, especially chapter one sixty-six. If you're ever really bored some night, uh, go online and just start. One sixty-six deals with municipal government, government. And you start looking through chapter one sixty-six. And there's a lot of, a lot of interesting things there that kind of talk about what cities can do. cities can do. Sometimes very different from what counties can do. Counties are all governed by chapter one twenty-five, so, uh, you know, there are some differences, but for cities, which is obviously what we are, uh, look through one sixty-six. Um, that brings us to the charter. Some of our charter, we have, as you know, a code of ordinances, but we have a charter. Charter is kinda like the constitution. It's the constitution of the city. Um, it can only be changed, um, in two ways, surprisingly. Uh, most people think it's only one, and that's a referendum, and that is basically the, the, the way we change the charter is by having to put it to the voters. The only exception to that, and it's a very narrow exception, and that is if the court rules on something that's improper in our charter, and they, we had a court order to change our charter, then you can do that through council action. But that's a very, a very narrow exception that's not gonna happen often. Um, so what I put in here, but again, it's a good read, if you were bored one night, you can read through the, through the charter and see all the different things, but, um, you know, it has the, the, the term of mayor and vice mayor, and how, uh, those are selected, which you know, because you just did it last Wednesday, um, what to do in the case of a vacancy in office, um, or vacancy in, in the mayor seat, um, and, and how to handle those. Um, the, not really something worth spending a lot of time on, because we'll definitely talk about it if it ever happens, and, uh, and we'll go way more in-depth. Um, what I wanted to, to really focus on was at the bottom of page four, starting at the bottom of page four going on to page five, is the general powers and duties, um, of the city council. And, uh, and especially in relationship to, to the other, the other, uh, operations in the city. The city council, uh, basically is the policy setter. You set policy for the city. Um, so your look at things are generally at the thirty thousand foot level. You set the policy, you then hire charter officers to fulfill that policy. The manager being the most significant one, and I, and, and so I put the manager's duties in here, uh, in its entirety, I put the whole section in, but basically, it's like any corporation where you have a board of directors, and then you have a C.E.O., he's your C.E.O., you're the board of directors. You decide the big picture of, of what you wanna see accomplished, and then you leave it to him to accomplish it. And that's, uh, you know, in a nutshell, about the best way it could be said. Um, what's important about that is that once you set as a body, and that's an important thing too, that it's not just one of you wanting to, so if just one of you wants to see, you know, pink lines down the middle of the streets instead of yellow, 'cause yellow is boring, you go to the manager and say, "Put pink stripes down the middle of all the streets." He's not gonna do it, because individually, and this is with all due respect, individually you really have no power. Your only power is collectively as a body. Um, you know, so something comes up for a motion, it's voted on, if the majority carries, then that will be the marching orders for the manager to go and do whatever it is, uh, you've asked him to do. So, so it's very important to, to kinda stay focused on that. But having appointed a city manager to run the city, to be your C.E.O., everybody else in the city except for, you know, you, you have three charter, you have three employees. You have the city manager is your employee, the city attorney is your employee, and the city clerk is your employee. Those are the only people that, as a body, you control and you direct. Beyond that, uh, it's up to them to handle, like in my case, I have no employees that work for me. Uh, the city clerk does, uh, but the vast majority of the employees in the city and all the departments and, you know, the, the community development, stormwater, the police department, everyone else, they all, through the structure, work for the city manager. It's up to him to direct city staff. So, you know, if you're driving down the street and you see a whole row of trees that are encroaching on the street, and they really need to be carved back, and you have, you know, really have a problem with this, and you really wanna see it done, your job is to pick up the phone and call the city manager to stop in and say, "Hey, there's a problem down here, could you maybe have somebody take a look at it?" That's the right way to do it. The wrong way to do it is to drive around till you find a city crew working and say, "Hey, guys, you need to go over there and trim these trees back." That's not the way to do it, because you, you know, and, and what you do, and the, and the reason I tell you that, and I do it with all due respect, is because you put the employees in a very, very bad position, 'cause here, these are employees, they're just the general workforce, the, the, the boots on the street, and they know you're a council member, and so they wanna do what you're asking, because you're a council member, they respect you for that, but at the same time, their boss may have told them to do something else. And now they're stuck between, "Do I do what my boss said, or do I do what this council member asked me to do?" And, and, uh, so you're, you're putting the employees in a bad situation if you, uh, if you try and direct the employees. So that's something to, uh, to remember for the good of the employees. Now, that said, manager's gonna, you know, be responsive to you. You pick up the phone, I'm sure you guys have been on council for a week, I'm sure you all have a cell number, uh, I'm sure you got that even before you were sworn in, as you should. Um, and if you have a question, you have a problem, you have a concern, uh, that's what he's there for, and, uh, and he'll get the answers back to you that you need. So, um, his powers and duties are there on page six and seven, I guess just six. Um, and, and as you can see, they're typical C.E.O. powers, and that is that it's his job to run the day-to-day operations of the city. And, uh, so you set the policy, and then he fulfills that policy. Page seven are the other charter officers, which is the city clerk and the city attorney. Ironically, uh, the way our charter's written, it has that police department in there. Uh, in large part, that's in there, because, uh, in the early days of Florida, a lot of police chiefs were, were charter officers too. I don't know if that was ever set up that way here? Was that set up that way here for a while? Okay, then that explains why that's kind of sandwiched in there. Um, I know there's still some cities around, I think West Melbourne's still set like that, uh, when I used to help them out. Um, so, uh, but, so the police chief's not a charter officer, the police chief works for the city manager. Um, but the irony of, of this is, in the charter, it does say that we will maintain our own police department, which means if you ever decide you wanna contract, uh, with the sheriff's department, you gotta convince the voters of it first. So the PD's, uh, a protected agency in the city, so that's a good thing, in my opinion. So, um, so the next page on the handout goes into the procurement policy. I'm, I'm gonna pass that off to somebody else, but before I do, I just wanna talk real quickly about public records and sunshine, uh, because it is a tricky area, it's a complex area. I encourage you to call me, I know you all have my cellphone number, call me if you have any questions, um, I'll be very happy to answer them. I'm sure your next city attorney will too, because that's our job, that's what we do for a living. Um, but in a nutshell, what's really important to, to, to know, especially about public records, is public record, it, it, what is important about a public record is what the content of the record is. Okay, if the content of a record is about city business, then it's a public record, most likely. Now, there may be exemptions to it, kinda like what we talked about earlier today, some things that we were going through in executive session, there's other exemptions, um, you know, some police personnel information is exempt, uh, medical records that are in employees' personnel files have exemptions. There's a lot of things that are exempt from disclosure, so they might be exempt from disclosure, um, but, um, it's important to know that if it's city business-related, it does not matter what medium you use to get that. Um, and up until just, well, before I came here, I was at another city, uh, down south, um, and, uh, and was constantly hearing like, "Well, I have people text me on my personal phone instead of my city phone, so that it's not a public record." Well, it's not the law. The law is if the topic is about city business, it's a city record. Uh, the reason we've given you all city phones and everything is be, very, because of that very reason. What was happening is if you use your personal device, either your personal laptop, your computer at home, or cellphone, uh, personal cellphone, to transact city business, and somebody does a public records request, um, there, there was, and actually, it was a recent case decision that said that it's your responsibility to give those records up. Um, but the, the scary part about it is if you, let's say, let's say I do that, I, I do a public records request for all the text messages on your personal phone, and you send me a, you know, ten pages of screenshots, and I say, "Not good enough, I know there's more on there." You know, and I file suit with the court, I could get the judge to, you know, issue an order for you to turn over your phone for inspection, so that I can make sure that all the city records are off of that. None of us wanna do that. I don't wanna do it, I'm sure none of you wanna do the, turn over your personal laptop or turn over your personal phone for inspection. So the best response we can have in a public records request is, you know, any public records on, on your personal device, you say, "I never transact business on my personal device." Period, end of story. You know, and if you don't do it, you always use your city phone, um, then that's the safest way, 'cause city phone, and if you keep city phone for just city business, they wanna look at that, and give it to them, say, "Here, you know, it's all there, look at whatever you want." Um, but, uh, that's the best way to protect your personal information. When I was down in Pompano Beach, we had that, where somebody, one of the council members or commissioners that were called down there, had to turn in his laptop for inspection in the court. Now, the court, it didn't turn it over to the other side, the court appointed somebody to go through it, but it's still very invasive to have somebody going through your laptop, looking at all your stuff to try and figure out what's, what's city-related and what's not. So it's way better off just to, uh, to make sure that, and, and, and everything is, is, uh, you know, like I said, if it's about city business, it's gonna be a public record. So, so, you know, you need to, we've gotten into a world where, especially with text messaging, um, we don't always filter ourselves before we say stuff, you know, that's something that we need to be attentive to, everybody, um, or all public employees anyway. Um, back in the day, when things were either phone calls or, or conversations face-to-face, you were, you know, then if you sat down to write a letter or type a letter that you were gonna mail, you were very deliberative about what you said. Now with text messages, sometimes it's just a stream of consciousness coming out on the screen, and you gotta, um, I, I was given advice a long time ago, and I think it holds true today, whenever you're writing something, especially, you're writing something about city, whenever you're writing something, think of it as this might be attached to a court pleading someday as an exhibit. Okay? So, so if you're writing something, you're okay saying, "Okay, there's gonna be a lawsuit someday, and this is gonna be attached as an exhibit." If you're okay with what it said, fine, but if it's something like, "Yeah, I probably wouldn't really wanna," you know, or, or think of it the other way, is that, you know, T.C. Palm is gonna do a public records request for what I just typed here, do I really wanna hit send? You know, because you can also pick up the phone and talk to people, it's probably getting to be a lost art form, but, you know, if you, if you wanna say something, you don't want that record of it, you know, pick up the phone and do it, do it, you know, orally, verbally, so that it's not, uh, there's not a record there. Sunshine law, I think most of you understand the parameters of that, most of you have been on other boards and stuff, but that is, uh, basically that, uh, individuals who are on the same board, uh, cannot speak to each other about something that is likely to come before you for a vote, uh, for official business. You see each other in, at Publix, and you wanna say hi, or you wanna talk about the football scores, or how great, you know, your, your team did this weekend, or, you know, what a beautiful sunset it was last night, or whatever, that's fine. You can be civil to each other and, and talk anytime you want. It's when you start talking city business that it's a problem. Now, the law says you can't talk about something that's foreseeably gonna come before you. Don't let that be your safe harbor, um, because, you know, that definition is, uh, is, is, could be a trap. Um, I, I tell this story, it's a story I use all the time, because it dates back to my early years, but I was down in Pompano Beach, I was an assistant city attorney in Pompano Beach, and Pompano Beach uses the sheriff as a contract for their police services, and they were on renewable five-year contracts. The sheriff down there, and this was like three sheriffs ago, um, but he used to have a habit, and that, what he would do is he would take his various contract cities, and he had a lot of them, he was kinda empire building down there, he had a lot of contract cities, but he would enter, you know, invite the city council or the city commission for one of his contract cities out to a breakfast meeting, you know, just come for breakfast, and I'm gonna give you an update, I'm gonna give you an update on, you know, the, the state of the, of, of your police services. And the city commission in Pompano Beach all went to this breakfast one time. Um, my office didn't know anything about it, city attorney didn't know anything about it, and they felt they were safe, because they were just listening to a presentation, right? You do this all the time, you go to Chamber of Commerce, or you go to various meetings, and you listen, and you figure as long as you're just listening, no big deal. The problem is this, this breakfast got into kind of a back-and-forth, like, you know, he was up there saying, "Oh, burglaries are down, but petty thefts are up," and then people would ask, "Well, what about, you know, what about along the beachside? Are the burglaries up there too?" And he's like, "Yeah, the burglaries are, you know, a little bit lower there," but, you know, and it was just a back-and-forth. Still, everybody felt they were confident that there was no business, you know, vote coming up, 'cause they were just talking about things that had already happened. The state attorney in Broward County filed charges against the entire city commission. Um, and the theory that he used is that the sheriff's contract was up for renewal in about eight months, and his performance was relevant to that vote that would be coming up in eight months, and therefore, they're, them talking about the sheriff's performance was business that should not have been done outside of a, of a publicly noticed sunshine meeting. So, um, you know, it, it turned out okay, they, they cut a deal, I think they each did, like, you know, they made a donation to a charity or something, and it was kind of a withheld adjudication, but, but it, it created about three months of angst for them while, while they were working this all out. So, so that whole thing about, you know, am I talking about something that might come before us, uh, a vote, um, that's, that's a trap. So you've got, gotta be real careful. So if you're talking city, my rule of thumb would be, my recommendation is, if you're talking city business, don't talk to, you know, just don't talk, if you're talking about something that's clearly in the past, you wanna sit here and talk about our former police chief or our former city manager, "Oh, remember so-and-so, he was great, blah, 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 blah." That's fine, probably, probably, and again, it's a probably, because that person might file for delayed pension benefits or something, and you have to deal with it, you don't know. But, uh, but if it's clearly something that's behind us, you know, you might be okay, but rule of thumb is if it's city business, uh, you wanna be careful. The other thing that's really important, and, and you see this a lot at meetings, um, and, and some cities have gotten in trouble for it, like, I know Orlando got in trouble for it, 'cause their, their council member, their commissioners there would text each other, uh, during commission meetings, and they got caught doing that, and they were like, "No, that's, you know, yes, you're in a public meeting, but everything needs to be verbally, so that everyone can hear it." So texting, the other thing is whispering. I had a, a board of mine, uh, in, in another city, where you have a meeting going on, and two board members off to the side are like, kind of doing one of these, you know, kind of having their own conversation. That's problematic, because you're in a public meeting, but what's important about sunshine law is that everybody out here is supposed to hear what's going on. So if two of you off on one side start having kind of a private conversation, it's, uh, you know, we'll kind of revert back to the school days, where the teacher's gonna stop and say, "Do you wanna tell everybody what you've been saying?" You know, so, um, you, you wanna be careful on stuff like that. Um, just remember that everything needs to be, you know, out loud and where everybody can hear it. And there are other requirements of the sunshine law, things that, you know, you don't have to worry too much about, because our fabulous city clerk takes care of it, but the meetings need to be noticed, they need to be noticed properly, in the right way, in the right places, there has to be minutes taken at the meetings, um, and those minutes, you know, are, have to be maintained for a certain amount of time. Uh, same with public records, we have a records custodian, and public records all have a, a retention cycle, some things might be able to get rid of in a year, other things have to be kept in perpetuity, so, um, but that stuff, all that your staff knows, and if you have questions about that, you can certainly ask. Um, so I don't know if you have any questions about either the, your charter role, or sunshine or public records? If not, uh, do you wanna do the procurement part of this? Okay, um, so if there's no other questions, I'm gonna let somebody that knows procurement, uh, very well, uh, come up and, and take care of that procurement part of this, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Anne Marie Fraser, she's the one I talk about being the rock star, and she put together a little presentation, you know, there were some questions about why we do certain things at the last council meeting. We're not trying to change the process, we wanna make sure everybody's aware of the process, and if council wants to look at that process, we're gonna be able to, to discuss it, you won't be able to do anything about, with that tonight, but just so you understand that the national public, uh, procurement is what we follow, and our policy is compliant with that. But Ms. Fraser's gonna go over the different policies, the different forms, the checklists, and things that we do to ensure that we are looking out for the public's interest when we do purchasing. And so I'll turn that over to Ms. Fraser.
All right, good evening, everyone. As Paul said, my name is Anne Marie Fraser, the procurement contracts manager for the city of Sebastian. Um, what I gave to you this evening... Um, what I gave to you this evening is a binded copy of the Institute, um, for Public Procurement, or NIGP. It's an organization that we as a city are a part of, as well as all other public entities, such as counties, municipalities, police stations, um, departments, rather. We all follow the information that's in, um, this guide. So, this is the Public Procurement Guide for elected and senior government officials. It goes over in detail different questions that you guys may possibly come across. It will go in, in detail to a lot of things, um, that you may have questions about. So, I'm not going to go into the details of it, because it's 24 pages, but definitely if you guys have any questions, you can streamline those through Paul and, uh, Mr. Carlisle, and he'll be able to get them to me, and I'll be able to assist with the responses. As well, I handed everyone a packet also. That includes a few forms and processes that I have created, that the city does, that we pride ourselves on standing by, especially when we submit any type of documentation or any type of purchases to you all as a council, um, for your approval. So, I'll go ahead and start with the Code of Ordinance procurement policy. Um, if we go down to section B, which talks about our purchasing thresholds, so, basically, the thresholds that we have in place for the city is the way in which we go based upon for, for approval for the purchases. So, if, for any purchases that are under $25,000, we consider that, um, a single quoted type of purchase.
Twenty-five hundred.
I'm sorry, $2,500. I'm sorry. $2,500, $2,500. It's a single quote, and the competition is encouraged, but it's not required. It's not required per our ordinance, um, to go out and solicit three bids from anybody, to go out and ask a lot of questions from anybody to be able to get details for the purchase. It's one single purchase. If we go out and do the additional work to gain competition, it's encouraged, but not For the next threshold, for $2,501 to $5,000, two or more verbal quotes are required. So, if we turn to page one, which is the top, and then page six of the packet that I gave you all, which is our last page of it, it is our three-quote form that I came up with, just so that everything is on one page. We will have the backup documentation of the quotes that we receive from the, from the, um, companies, whether it be via email, whether it be via phone, but on here, it gives us the opportunity to put all of the vendor's information, any notes that they, that may make the difference on who we choose, whether it be delivery time, whether it be price, everything like that will be listed in our comments. Our next price would be the $5,001 to the $15,000 purchase limit, and that is required by three quotes. And same thing, that form is used. For our requisitions that are between five, $15,001 to $25,000, additionally, three quotes are required, but at that point is when we come to you all for city council approval. So, different things can go on with, um, items that are $15,000 or more, um, such as piggybacks, or something that we can consider at that point. Um, three quotes is something that we can consider at that point, just so that we can get the best value to the city, not only by price, but also by value. So, sometimes things will happen where it may not be the best price, but it may be the best value based on the qualifications of the vendor. For purchases over $25,000, at that point, our ordinance does state that a formal sealed bid has to go out for the solicitation. Exceptions to that rule are also listed below, which we're going to go over. So, exceptions to the threshold, if you continue on to C, we have joint bids, um, piggyback bids, sole source, sole source purchases, emergency purchases, change orders, and contract renewals. So, when we go into detail with the, um, joint bids, it's more so like cooperative bids. So, we are a part of a list of cooperatives. I believe we're, we're, we're a part of nine right now. So, the fact that when we join those cooperatives, they actually go out on our behalf and solicit services and goods in the same way that we would our formal solicitation process. So, they actually have members of, whether it be a board or their employees that are employed by them, they actually create these solicitation documents, advertise them, um, answer any questions that may come up, do bid openings, review based off of an evaluation committee, and they go ahead and award it based off of the information received. So, at that point, because we are a part of them, they are acting on behalf of us to go ahead and do the same process that we would have to administer, um, administratively. The piggybacking, um, is also similar to a joint bid, but the bid is done also by a public entity. So, oftentimes cooperatives are not public entities. They are, um, they are companies on their own, but whereas piggybacks, it's us following or piggybacking off of a cooperative, is what we still call it, and then also a public entity. So, that can be a county, that can be a municipality, that can be a police, a sheriff's office, if you will, um, any of those, along those lines. Um, when you piggyback, if you look at page three, I included our piggyback checklist. So, that goes into detail with the definition of a, of a piggyback, where it states it in our city ordinance, as well as what backs us Florida statute-wise on piggybacking, um, and then letting you know that piggybacking is not authorized for the procurement of professional services that are subject to the CCNA, Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act, and as well as that statute that correlates with that. So, in the process of doing a piggy, a piggyback, because it is essentially the same thing that we will be doing as a procurement office through the city of Sebastian, it is my job to go ahead and make sure that I acquire all of the documents listed to be able to prove that they took the same process that I would have taken, had I done the work to solicit the, the purchase of the goods or the service. So, I would get the original solicitation document, be, be able to make sure that the specifications are listed, um, because of anything that we substitute, whether it be quantities, or whether it be the value of anything, at that point, we would not be able to use a piggyback, because we have to meet the same, um, the same standards of what it is that they went out to look for, because we have to make it even and fair competitive playing field for everybody. So, whatever information that that entity made everybody privy of, we have to be able to follow that, um, what's listed inside of their documentation. Proof of the agency's legal advertisement, we have to be able to show and prove that they actually did fairly, um, advertise it to everyone, giving everybody, whether it be a newspaper, or whether it be third-party sites, such as DemandStar, Vendor Registry, Bid Intenders. It's a lot out there, um, as long as we, we can prove that they actually did advertise it. A copy of the awarded firm's bid submittal and proposal. So, we want to see what they, what the, the awarded vendor submitted. So, we want to see what kind of forms. We want to see their W9. We want to see, um, their insurance, if, if that actual bid required for them to submit a, a certificate of insurance. We want to see their subcontractors, if they have any listed. We want to see everything that they submitted on the forms that was provided by the entity to be able to make a clear decision to say, "This is who we want to go with, and this is why," but all while saving the city money and administrative time, because in essence, when we put, when we put these items out on the same mainstream or the same, um, like DemandStar, for example, these are the same vendors. When we advertise it, it's going out to the same vendors as when Port St. Lucie advertises it, or advertises it and uses the same commodity code. The bid tabulation sheet, which will give us a chance to be able to see who submitted a proposal. We cannot make anyone submit a proposal. It is our job as procurement professionals to advertise it, to put the information out there, and it is their job to decide if it's worthwhile for them, because some, one can feel like sometimes doing business with the government is very tiresome and a very long process. Um, you have other times where the project just doesn't fit the time schedule, which we actually have a form that I put inside of our solicitations that is a statement of no response, which gives them the opportunity to let us know, they're not obligated to, but they can share with us why it is that they can't, or they're choosing not to respond, so that that can make us be more efficient in how we prepare our documentation and things along that line. Um, the bid submittals, as I said, will show, so, with a, with a bid, um, tabulation statute-wise, we are not obligated to show the prices that the vendors or the bidders submit when they submit their proposals. The only ones that we are legally obligated to share pricing with is when it is a construction-based project. And at that time, at bid opening, we do not state the line-for-line price. We state the bottom-line number with the person, with all of the bids that came in. So, that is the only one that as procurement professionals, we are obligated, um, to share that information. You have some entities that best practice will still share the prices, but again, not obligated. So, when we submit, um, information on piggybacks, if I submit to you all the bid tabulation or the proposals received, sometimes you will get prices from everyone else that submitted, whether it be two bids, or even one, or if it's five bids, it may not include, um, pricing information, or it may. The agency's award document, so that'll usually be the award, um, the award letter that they actually send out to the vendors, that the vendor signs, saying that they comply, um, with the award, the award process, whether it be an evaluation committee that was done to be able to, um, to sanction the award. And then a copy of the fully executed, um, executed signed agreement or contract. And right there, it has if applicable, because you have a few entities that actually, when you, say, for example, you put out an ITB with multiple line items. When a vendor submits it, that makes it now legally binding. So, a lot of entities do not do the redundancy of creating another agreement or another contract, when they actually have a bid solicitation that has their boilerplate terms and conditions in it, that has their prices submitted from the vendor, that has their signature and their date stating that these are the prices that we are willing to hold firm for the con, for the term of the contract. It's not necessary to create another agreement. So, at that point, it will be if applicable, and if it doesn't apply, then of course, that's something that I would let you all know and state the reason why. Lot of information. Guys have any questions right now?
So, the proper procedure for a vendor wanting to place a bid would be on this website?
Correct.
Directly.
So, yes. So, I'm going to also go through that. So, we have, we're actually a part of, well, I actually post bids in three different ways. I post it on our city website, which is free, um, so that there is no, there's no question as far as if they're paying for documents, if they're paying for plans. Everything is made available on there. That includes our advertisement. That includes our addenda. If anything goes out, we've, you can have no addenda, or you can have eight pieces of addenda, depending on how the questions come in, if anything is changed, if a design or anything along that line. The bid opening information, the, all of the solicitation documents and plans are available on our website. The website, again, is free to access, but it does not allow for a notification to the vendors based on their commodity code. So, it will be, it will be their sole responsibility to go onto our website to be able to check for any newly posted addenda, if we have something out. I try my best to be able to get input, um, from our end-users, as well as going online to find local vendors to send out notifications to. Sometimes I pick up the phone and I'll call them, getting their email address to send out a notification. Hello, city of Sebastian, just released a solicitation for banking services. Please visit our website or the other links below to be able to access the solicitation documents. And that's it. The vendor is then responsible thereafter to continuously check back up into bid opening so that they can make sure that they, they are complying with any added information based off of the addenda. Then the other two sites is our Vendor Registry, which is too free to the, um, any interested vendors. They, it is their responsibility to create an account, set commodity codes, and if the commodity code meets what it is that they offer, they will get a notification. City of Sebastian has posted a solicitation for banking services. Click here to view the documents. The third way that I post solicitations is on DemandStar.com. So, DemandStar is not free, um, but DemandStar is one of the largest and one of the most reputable companies that actually do bid solicitation, um, web services. So, like I said before, there's Bid Intenders, there's, um, there's a few other, BidSync, but DemandStar is actually the one that started the whole web service side. So, they, of course, have more, um, their population of vendors is a lot larger than anyone else, which is why we ended up choosing them ultimately. Lot of information, right? Any other questions? No? So, that's the, the, the whole process behind piggybacking. So, piggybacking may seem like it's an easy way out, but it's still a lot of information that we have to obtain to be able to go through to make sure that what we're doing, i- it follows our policy, as well as we're getting the best buy and the best value. So, again, a lot of things that, when I explain it to you, whether it be through agenda transmittal, or whether it be when we actually have conversations, is not going to always be about price. It just depends on the, it depends on the industry, and it depends on what our needs are as a city. So, sometimes the, you get what you pay for. So, sometimes the cheapest is not always the best value. And we have to be able to justify that, of course, but we have to also be able to understand that, um, when it comes to that part of it. All right. So, then going down for number three of our exceptions is sole source. So, for a sole source, um, it's, it says, "A contract may be awarded for goods or services without competitive bids when the purchasing officer determines, determines in writing that there is only one practical source for the required item." So, when an item comes in to me that says that they're sole source, me as a procurement professional, I always question, "Is it really a sole source?" I'm never one that takes something, um, for face value when the vendor sends it in and says it's a sole source, because I'm guaranteed that I can probably get on Google, type in the name of it and find it somewhere else. So, I do do my, I, I pride myself in doing my due diligence and making sure that there's no other way around it. Now, a couple of things can make something a sole source, though. So, just because one thing offers the same function as another, just by having one different trait can make it a sole source. So, if we have two systems that offer the same type of, um, service, but the other system digs a little bit deeper, and they have a part of the system that tells you if something is ADA compliant or not, that will make them sole source, because the value of that, it may be a little bit more expensive, but you're paying for what you're getting, as well as nobody else provides the same system with the ADA compliance. So, that then will make it sole source. It's a lot more examples that I can give you, but that's in essence of what a sole source is. So, if you take a look in the packet that I gave you at the extraordinary procurement certificate, this is also another form that I came up with, um, where it lists is what the different exceptions that are available to our end-users, the emergency, single-source and sole source, source purchases below the $15,000 threshold, where they are able to make the selection and give justification as to, you know, exactly why it is. So, with a sole source, I would ask for the sole source letter from the vendor, as well as do my own research, um, and be able to, to find out if there's anything else that can be offered in substitution of it. A single source is basically about the city standardization, any type of warranty or other distinctive factors. So, say, for example, you can buy a computer from anywhere. You have HP computers, Dell computers, Lenovo computers, but if we have, um, gone ahead and adopted a standardization throughout the city to be consistent, and that consistency can come across, because we need to maintain warranty, because we need to make sure that our IT individuals know what kind of equipment they're working with to be able to maintain it. If they are certified, if we've paid for their certification to fix Dell computers, and we go buy Lenovo's, we now have to pay for them to go get Lenovo training. So, why not just continue the, um, standardization and the consistency of continuing to buy Dell computers, so that you can ensure that the warranty remains, as well as your staff are equipped to maintain the equipment? Um, that's an example of single source. Um, for emergency purchases, it states it on number four. It's defined as "an unexpected turn of events that causes immediate danger to public health, safety, and public property, or an interruption of essential governmental services or city operations." Emergency is not urgent. An emergency is not, "I forgot." An emergency is exactly what it states. If it is detrimental to public health, if there's anything that's going to stop happening in the city that, um, comes up, it's not something that the end-users make that decision on their own. They go ahead and they consult with Mr. Carlisle, and he will be able to tell them the directive to take. At that point, then, do we provide the justification of it being an emergency purchase? And again, this is something that all of us have to sign off on, myself, the department head, and Mr. Carlisle, confirming that either one of the selections applies to the purchase, and that will justify it, um, for it being necessary. Any other questions? All right. Um, change orders, as you know, if we are already in, in the middle of a project and we've awarded something, a change order may come up, because, and to keep, in order to keep the project going, it may be needed in order, it doesn't make sense sometimes to go out and bid again, a piece of a project, whereas you've already awarded the, the contractor to carry out the project. So, if it's in relation to the same exact scope of work that we already have them currently working on, that's when a change order would come into place. Um, at a, at the threshold in excess of 15% of the total price, we would then come back to you all, provide information, provide the backup, provide, um, any type of details that would allow you all to easily be able to understand why the change order is needed, um, and then go from there. But anything other, under $15,000, it will continue to meet the threshold as before, where myself, um, the department heads and Mr. Carlisle have the authority to be able to, um, give the okay for those change orders. For contract renewals, um, when we come to you all for contracts that will exceed the yearly, um, threshold of the fif, of the $15,000, um, you all are giving us authority, or giving Mr. Carlisle authority to be the, to sign off on that contract, as well as As well as in there, you will usually have any type of extension or renewal terms in there. Which you allowing, or authorizing Mr. Carlisle to do so, you allow for the renewal periods, you allow for the extensions. Um, if anything goes beyond there, and again, it, it fits over the threshold, then that too will come to you all for review. Um, and your approval or denial. And then I won't go into detail to the exceptions to applicability. Um, it basically lets you know the things that we don't have to go out to bid for if they go over the fifteen thousand dollar threshold. Alright, so then our local vendor preference policy. Our local businesses, we, we always encourage for local businesses, a lot of times with the federal, it then changes. Because we then have to, um, start to look at minority women, um, owned businesses to be able to qualify for the grant. So a lot of times you will see items that we could, of course, when you start talking about federal grants, we could definitely go ahead and piggyback. But some grants do not allow us to do the piggybacking, um, mechanism. We would in, actually have to end up putting out administratively our own bids, our own solicitations, um, for specific federal grants. So when we go ahead and do that, um, we do not give preference to local, um, vendors when it comes to federal grants. That would only apply when we are doing items that are our own general funded money. So if you ever see a, a solicitation that comes across and it's from a federal grant and you notice that we are giving a tiebreaker. Um, preference to a MWBE versus a local preference, that's the reason why. Because in the fine print of the federal grant, in order to get the money, we have to be able to show, when we turn in all of our solicitation documents. If they see where we allowed for local business preference, we could, we could actually lose the money. Yes.
Not just federal, it's state.
So state as well. And then, so for our local business, um, it does cover City of Sebastian, um, as well as Indian River County. And it is a, the bidder's job or the proposer's job to give us the documentation that says that they are event, that they are, that they can prove to be a local, um, business owner. Which it, it comes with their tax receipt and everything along that line. But this is also a part of our solicitation document and it always sits at the back of our boilerplate information. Um, it goes into detail on describing how, um, how we go ahead and we compute the, the local vendor's preference. Um, with a competitive bid. Um, once we go through and we figure out the pricing or the, um, evaluation of the vendors. If it comes in that they are five percent within the, the difference of the lowest bidder, they have the opportunity to be able to match that price. If they are willing to match that price, then they will be selected and we will be able to pay for those services or goods at that discounted price. Um, and again, at that time, they get to decide if that's something that they are willing to take. So of course, with local businesses and smaller business owners, they require, they, sometimes they have to put the price higher than the bigger companies. So that's where you start to come in and talk about price versus value. Sometimes they may be able to provide the better service because they're local, but then they're higher priced, so then how do you explain it to? Um, so at that point, we give them the opportunity to match if they feel comfortable to match. If they don't feel comfortable to match, then there's plenty of other opportunities, um, that they can do with the city. And, um, that's how that works. And then also for tie bids. We also have a few, um, exceptions to the local vendor preference. Um, if there's, if there's any piggybacking, we cannot give preference to the local vendor. It goes based off of who was awarded. Um, purchases and was a contract that are funded, governments, um, are federally and state also here as well. Um, any form of emergency or non-competitive situations, we also do not have to allow for the local vendor preference. Um, for purchases that are less than five thousand dollars, we do not have to, um, allow the local vendor preference to apply. And then in situations where all of the bids are rejected. Any questions? Okay. So also in your packets, I gave you all the solicitation process. Um, which also basically goes into detail of the solicita- solicitation process for ITBs, RFPs and RFQs. So just to briefly go over the solicitation types, the, um, ITB is the invitation for bids. That's, that's always price driven. So I would make that determination with the help of the end user departments to determine if, um, the industry or the item or the services that we're looking for. How different is it gonna be from all the vendors in the, in the industry and how they're gonna be able to supply that to the city? So if we are purchasing paper goods, for example, um, that's pretty simple and straight to the point. I need fifty pack of paper plates, nine inches. I need, um, napkins, a hundred and fifty count. And give me your prices, and that's very plain cut. Whoever is the lowest bidder, that's who we as a city wanna do business with. Um, because can't really change toilet paper and paper and goods for public entity. Um, requests for proposals, which is our RFPs, that submits both pri- both qualifications and cost information. So to be able to keep that as a even playing field, um, what I do when I go ahead and receive the bids or the proposals rather. Is I take out, I extract the pricing information. So when I go ahead and, and get my evaluation committee together and I give them all of the documentation, they are not privy of price. Because I wanna know what is your true, um, analysis and your true review of the qualifications of the vendor, without seeing how much they're gonna charge us. I want you to be able to, to be unbiased, tell me what it is that you think about their work. Tell me what you think about the quality of what they can provide to the city. And then the prices are then computed using a formula. So the formula is very subjective, there is no questions asked. The lowest vendor will of course get the max prices, the, the max amount of points for pricing. And it will go down, um, based off of the formula. And that formula, all of this information is available in the solicitation documents. Um, we actually have two out right now, if you all ever wanted to just kinda see what the documents look like. They're on our website, there's an ITB out right now, as well as an RFP. Feel free to go ahead and see what's in there, everything is in there. Um, as far as how they will be evaluated, you get a chart with what the criteria is. Any details that will contribute to the criteria with your points. So again, us as the, as a public entity, we are giving them all of this information. And it is their individual responsibility to decide how they want to respond and if they want to respond. So some will respond with two pages as a response, and you have others that will respond with eighty pages. Of pictures, examples and everything to go with it, because they're trying to sell themselves. Cause that's ultimately what the response is to do. Um, a request for qualific- qualifications, sorry, which is RFQ. It asks for information on the expertise or experience and is not based on costs. Negotiation of a fair and reasonable compensation is, is what follows. So at that point, again, that's strictly qualifications, that's strictly the value that you can bring to the city. And then at which point, we then go forth into negotiations to decide what the better price is. A lot of times RFQs are used more so for CCNA projects or for all CCNA projects. Um, because that is the way the act is written. So once we go ahead and, and we, so the process for the review of an RFP or an RFQ. Once we get all the bids or proposals in, the evaluation committee is put together. We have a open, um, meeting, which is noticed in the correct form through our public record, through our sunshine state law. Um, as well as our public records and they both go together with procurement, I'll explain that in more detail. They come together, it is an open meeting where vendors are able to attend, but they are not allowed to speak. They are not allowed to have any type of public input. At that point, the evaluation committee comes together and they discuss what they have found. Um, in the vendor's proposals, whether it be something they need to discuss, whether it be something that they need to get a clear understanding of how they're gonna evaluate. Or why they're gonna evaluate, because they do so independently. There's no conversation that they can have in order, um, to review the proposals. At which point, if they decide to recommend to the city council, uh, the highest, um, scored vendor or firm, then that's fine. But we can also then go to oral presentations, where oral presentations are now closed meetings. So those closed meetings, um, similar to the one that you all had today, it's not open to the public. Only the vendor in which we have invited for the oral presentation can be in that oral presentation. Um, and then the next one's going forth, um, as well as similar to CCNA. Those are all closed meetings, public cannot sit in as we sit down and negotiate. Those are meetings that I still would take record of, that I would still, um, let, will notify that it's happening, but nobody's able to sit in. Um, at which point, after that, we're able to, we reconvene again for a public meeting. Um, which, again, public is able to come, public input is not allowed. And at that which point, they can recommend to the city council who it is that they are looking to, um, to do business with an award. So this process starts all the way from the top when the department head notifies me that a solicitation is needed. And it goes all the way through the process that I explained, whether it be advertising, pre-bid conference, whether it be a site, visit or not. Or whether it's here in the council chambers, um, some of them are mandatory, some of them are non-mandatory. The reason, the difference between a non-mandatory and a mandatory is just because some projects are a little bit more, um, more complex and intuitive. And again, you're making it, you want it to be fair, open and even. So I make the playing field as even, anything that I say to one vendor, I want all vendors to hear. And that's the, that's the reasoning for addendas. So if one person asks us a question, I don't respond back to them via email, I let them know, please refer to the addenda posted on, I'll give a date. Or please, a new addenda will be posted by end of day, because I want everybody to get the same response. I don't want my emails to him to be worded one way, and then when I put the response on the addenda for it to be a different way. Everybody is open to the same answers, everybody's open to the same information. So that it is their sole responsibility to perceive it how they wanna perceive it. They can ask another question if they have another question that goes after, but everybody is, is even. Question and answer deadline, as I stated, there's a deadline time for answers, um, which I usually do a week before, um, bid opening. That gives everybody the chance to whatever answers have gone out, if they need to change up their response. To be able to meet any needs that we've changed or anything that we've changed in terms and conditions. They can do so and that's out a week before the solicitation is due. Bid opening publicly announced, bid and proposals are received. Responsive review, I go through them first just to make sure that they're responsive, make sure they have all the necessary forms completed. If there's something that we consider to be immaterial, we do have the right to be able to say, we still would like to review their proposal. And still give them that chance to, um, to be considered. If it's something like they just forgot to write their name on a sheet of paper that obviously was in their bid. So it doesn't, it doesn't change how we can rate their proposal is what makes it immaterial. Um, the bid review and proposal goes to our city manager, our department heads, um, city council and city representatives. For review of submission and recommendation of award, all that has kinda come together because that's all one process in its, in a, in a nutshell. The recommendation of award comes to you all, and then the contract signing, which I usually have implemented now doing kickoff meetings. Where I actually sit myself down with the vendors and the department heads, where we actually kinda go over invoicing requirements. We go over the expectations of the city and the expectations of them. If we have any obligations to provide to them, for them to be able to fully carry out their job that's in the contract that we're supplying them. Um, any contact numbers, we go through the whole spiel, one sit down, everybody's available, everybody's there. At that point, the notice to proceed is given and the purchase order is given. So the beauty of piggybacks and cooperative is that we miss a lot of these boxes. Because I have now the time to focus on contract management, I have now the time to focus on other entities of procurement. That is not just solicitations, because that piggyback already did that job for us. The piggyback already posted on DemandStar, the piggyback already evaluated them independently with an evaluation committee. The piggyback already has awarded, the piggyback has already seen that these three came in, but this was the lowest or this was the best value. So that's the reason behind the piggyback. Cone of silence. So the cone of silence, um, shall be established on all cities' formal competitive solicitations upon its advertisement. That includes ITBs, RFPs, RFQs. Um, the cone of silence prohibits the following activities. Um, any communication regarding a part, a particular solicitation after it has been advertised. This includes communication between a potential vendor, a lobbyist, consultant and the city staff. A member of the selection committee, the mayor or any council members. So the, um, the cone of silence is designated to protect the professional integrity of the procurement process. By shielding it from undue influences prior to the recommendation of contract award. So, uh, cause usually I try to set all my bids to go out or to be released on a Monday. So which means that on the Sunday before it goes out on the Monday, that's when it's published into our paper. Um, that gives everybody the opportunity to see it, if they're not computer savvy, they see it in the newspaper rather, you know, for local, um, businesses. And at which time I send out the email, which is also in the packet that I supplied to you, an example of the email that goes out to city department heads. It states to them that the cone of silence is in full effect until an award is made by the city council. Contact by a bidder or proposer or anyone representing them regarding any of the following solicitations with the city council or a city employee. Represent or representative, other than the point of contact listed is grounds for disqualification. This solicitation and associating documents can be found on the websites below. Please do not contact, please do not communicate with interested vendors. Please refer all vendors or questions received to, and then it states my email address. The following solicitations are under the cone of silence as of, and that's the date that it goes out. So it will list the bid number with the bid title, so that everyone is privy of that information. As a city, any questions that come in to permitting or our building department, any questions that come into the police department, community development, anybody that's interested, anybody that has questions. We deal a lot with construction journal, if you all are privy to knowing that, um, you have GovQuote, you have a lot of these other vendors that, um, kinda requests for a lot of information for us. To be able to notify their contractors, all of that is fed through me. So the cone of silence is lifted when we have oral communications at pre-bid meetings or site visits. Oral presentations to, um, to the evaluation committees for the evaluation committee meetings. Public presentations made to you all as a city council, um, at a duly noticed public meeting. Written communications that come to me that I issue on an addendum, it's lifted, that gives them the ability to talk to me about, um, the RFP, RFQ or ITB. Communications between the city staff and the city attorney, whether it for, whether it be for any of his suggestions or, um, such duly noticed site visits. Um, any emergency procurements of goods, responses to the city's requests for clarification or additional information. So oftentimes, something will come in like a proposal and I may need a clarification of what they, of what they meant by what it is that they submitted. But it's me as the point of contact, I'm the only person that can make that communication or, um, reach out to them to ask for clarification. But at which point, the cone of silence is temporarily lifted, so that I can have that conversation with them. And then as well as communications to enable city staff to seek and obtain industry comment or perform, perform market research. Provided that all communications related thereto between a potential vendor, um, is between a city's professional staff. Such as the city manager or myself or the city attorney. Violation of the cone of silence by a particular bidder or proposal may, proposer may result in disqualification of their submission for their bid. Um, and then if it's something that continues to happen, then of course, that's something that we would look into, which is a form of debarment, because they're not following suit. Um, to keep the cone of silence present, um, to do business with the city. So, any other questions? Isn't public procurement fun? Alright, so we have our competitive, um, negotiation, I'm sorry, consultants competitive negotiation act. So that's the acquisition of professional architectural, engineering, landscape architectural or surveying and mapping services. Um, and then under our Florida statute, section two eighty seven point zero five five. It goes into a little bit more detail as far as definitions, procedures, contingent fees, um, prohibits and, um, penalties. So back to what I was telling you about the negotiations. With the, with the CCNA, when we have vendors such as those, um, it is our responsibility to come to you all and request for award. To the top ranked, top ranked firm. And is that, that is then our job to al- also ask for authorization for us to negotiate for a GMP, which is a guaranteed, um, market price. And then at that time, if we cannot come to terms with the price, if the price does not sound good, if their negotiations are not good. If we decide to stop negotiations with them and move to the next, um, scored vendor, we cannot return back to have a conversation with them. We have now forfeited what they've put on the table. We have to also keep in mind that, that takes the upper hand from us. Because at which point, with our public records law, we have from bid opening, we have thirty days. Um, until after bid opening for it to be an exception. After thirty days of the bid opening or the time of award, we are now privy to public records requests. And they can come at any given time and say, hey, we need to see how much that person had on the table for you, um, to do business with them. And now they have the upper hand, because we can no longer go back, if that price is lower, they can potentially come in at a higher price. So sometimes doing negotiations as such, going down the line to try to find the better price. We actually take the upper hand from the city and we put us in a very binding situation and we are encouraging colluding. We're encouraging them to work together to figure out how to get the, the business from the city, but for everybody to get a piece of the pie. And that's something that we don't want to encourage, something that they should not be doing, but we have to be realistic that it is private, it is industry. And these are these individuals livelihoods that we're talking about. Um, so that kinda goes into detail with CCNA. So that kind of goes into detail with CCNA. So again, that is, that goes based off of RFQ. Pricing is not included. It is...
I just want to talk about the three that we have out there, just to give them an example.
Okay.
So we have three out there now that are under the CCNA. We have the Public Works Compound. We have Hangar D. And we have the generator that'll be coming back to you to award the funds. And what we did is, is we hired these firms. Generators are good. When we hired the firm to come and design what size generator, we didn't know. We designed, they designed what size generator, the switchgear and everything, and they give us a price. And we bring that back to you all to award the price based on their design criteria and the things that they specked out. We don't get the opportunity to go, no, we want you to change this product for that product. They're the design professionals. They tell us based on that. If we don't want to use what they use, we have to do what she said. We have to get rid of them and move to the next vendor. So we bring it to you. We've hammered with them the best price and the best way to do it. So when we do the design for Hangar D, we've been in negotiations with them on price and design and value engineering, which we do with all of these projects to try to get the best bang for our buck. So when we bring it to you, we won't be bringing you three prices because we're in a negotiation process. If that makes sense.
And then for that process, it has already been awarded. So at that point, you guys are awarding the contract essentially to a vendor, and it is our, you guys give Mr. Carlisle the authorization to sit down and have these conversations, and then for us to come back and get the approval for the amount. So that's why we don't come with the three bids, because it's already awarded essentially.
Design bill, that's correct.
Yes. Any questions on CCNA? Alright, so now the tail end of it for lobbyists. So a lobbyist is a person, what is it? Let's see. Means a person who is employed and receives payment or who contracts for economic consideration for the purpose of lobbying, or a person who is principally employed for governmental affairs by another person or government entity to lobby on behalf of that other person or governmental entity. It is our jobs to make sure that when you all are having conversations, you're ensuring that they are registered with the state. So the website for Florida lobbyists is floridalobbyists.gov.
Uh, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.